Go ahead and reconvene the Parker Town Council meeting at 7:17 PM. Council, if everyone could please sign in. I grabbed the wrong box. All council members are present with the exception of Councilman Josh Martin, who is unfortunately still unable to walk after his last prosthetic leg update. It didn't update as good as it was supposed to update, so he's having a hard time. Those of you who have no idea what I'm talking about, one of our council members only has one leg, and so his other leg, fake leg, isn't fitting right right now, so he can't walk.
A Microsoft leg?
Oh, look at that, you gotta pull that out there. If it was a Macintosh leg, it'd cost 10 times as much.
Ooh.
Alright, so let's go ahead and let's see, I'm looking through the minutes, I don't see any, well, I see lots of youngsters, but I don't see any like youngster youngsters to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. How old are you in the back corner there? Seventeen. Seventeen, come on down!
You make the cut.
You look like an old seventeen, though, you really do. Come on down.
A mature seventeen.
A mature seventeen, yeah, I gotta, that's not very politically correct. What's your name?
Ian.
Ian, come on down, Ian. You get to lead us in the most important part of the meeting, which is honoring our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're all gonna turn around and everyone's watching you right now, including the thousands of people on Facebook Live. We're gonna wait to hear you start the pledge, and then when you start it, we're all gonna follow along.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, good job, Ian. Way to go.
Thank you.
It's not easy to get called out. Alright, here. So before we roll into special presentations, I actually, I'm gonna kinda break course a little bit tonight. There's a couple, two special presentations that I, I'm gonna need you all to help me out with. First off, we all know that like having to work after hours when you're not really scheduled to work usually kinda sucks, you know, it's, no one really likes having to do that. But at the Town of Parker, we've got an incredible staff, and sometimes they're called out to work after hours, and it's, even stinks even more when that happens to be your birthday. So Paul, could you do me a favor and stand up in the back, so everyone can point at him? We're gonna sing him happy, Paul Workman's one of our staff members here, we're gonna sing him happy birthday, 'cause he's having to work on his birthday night. So, I'm gonna turn my mic off, 'cause y'all don't wanna hear me sing, but...
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Paul.
Happy birthday to you.
Yay! Is it a, is it bad course to ask you how old you are today?
Twenty-nine.
Thirty-seven years old! Well, you know, it's kinda interesting too, because on this day, 52 years ago, there was a really special event. Young lady and a young man decided to start a life together, and one of the results of that is our own John Dyack. If everyone could turn around and see the camera pointing at us, I will almost guarantee you that there is a young lady named Kathleen who's watching right now, 'cause she routinely comments on Facebook Live that, "Oh, hi, there's Johnny, he's doing good," and it's his mom. So, happy anniversary, John and Kathleen.
Happy anniversary!
If you're watching right now, we don't have Facebook Live up here, so if any of you guys do or like doing it, hopefully she's saying hi back, or any of that, so, alright.
I don't think she's watching.
She's not watching, you have the time that she's not watching.
Did she go out to dinner tonight, John?
Oh, I, I think she's watching.
Happy anniversary, she's out for dinner.
Well, she already got back and she already texted.
She had buffet.
She's out there watching.
Dinner at three.
You can expect those comments to come in.
Alright. Michelle, do we have any other special presentations tonight?
No.
Alright, then we're gonna go and move on to the Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. Mr. Houston, come on down.
Good evening, sir.
A few, a few things from the chamber, an update. You have one flyer at your place setting, just a heads up on our candidate forum that we do every two years during the election cycle. We have a candidate forum scheduled this year for Wednesday, October 17th, at the Pace Center, and that will be for some local and state offices. It will be for town council races, for the Town of Parker, Douglas County Commission, and also state senate and state house, for those that represent the Town of Parker as part of their district. So, come check that out. We confirm this year that there was not a Broncos game on that evening. Two years ago, we made that mistake.
Thank you.
Inevitably, there's gonna be something else, and I mean, it's always that way, right? There's not a Broncos game.
We still had 100 people there on that night, though, so I was, I was pleased to have 100 people there on the night that Broncos were playing, so, yeah.
Depends on how they're playing.
We're watching on the phone.
There we go, yeah, that's it, that's it. Anyway, a few, a few other great things. We've officially hired our workforce director, I've been talking to you guys about that for a period of time, Laura Tool. Some of you may know her, Parker resident, she's joined our team and already doing some great things, so we'll have some, some big things coming out from that this fall, so stay tuned if you will. We've been working closely with Douglas County School District and Dr. Thomas Tucker, the new superintendent, on some programming related to workforce and students, and have some, some cool things in the works related to some potential internship programs in partnership with Douglas County Schools. Our, a couple educational things coming up as part of our business, business education series, our Lunch and Learn series, we have one coming up on September 12th. It's about market research, it's our partnership with Small Business Development Center, helping small businesses look at market research and some of the great material they have access to, some of which is through the library. On September 14th, at our Business Impact Meeting is, we have Kelly Bruff, the CEO of the Denver Metro Chamber, speaking with us about some regional collaboration that we've been a part of. On, in early October, at our Business Impact Meeting, we'll actually have Dr. Thomas Tucker, the new superintendent of Douglas County Schools, talking about education and business partnerships. I already mentioned our candidate forum, and, and then in October, at the end of October, on October 30th, we're gonna have another Lunch and Learn's episode of our series, The Mind of an Entrepreneur. Again, some education for businesses just starting out, or even those that are in their first few years, to help, help get them over the hurdle. On a couple fun things recently, our last wine walk was a big success, had a large group of people downtown, and continually we hear from area restaurants and pubs, that's their largest evening of the, of the month, and continues to be. And Saturday, we started a great movie, Lego Batman, for movies in the park, but some strong winds came up, and for the safety of those there, we, we did have to call off the movie partway through, because you don't wanna 40-foot movie screen flying down Parker Road. I thought I might get a call.
I'm sure that violates some ordinance somewhere.
Yes, yes. I was afraid I might get a call from the town attorney if that goes flying down the street, so, anyway, we, we called it off, but we'll, we'll be rescheduling that. And last but not least, as, as Chair of our CCCE, which is our State Chamber Association, we're holding our, our Fall Retreat later this week in Arvada, and a main focus of ours, even at the state level, is looking at bringing some of our resources together as chambers of commerce throughout the state related to workforce, and how can we work together to help solve that challenge, we continue to hear day in and day out from our businesses, not just in Parker, but in communities around the state. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Dennis. Council, any questions?
No.
Alright, very good. Appreciate it, thank you. Alright, next up is our Downtown Business Alliance update. Shelley, would you like to come on down?
Okay, thank you Mayor, Town Council, and everyone else here for having me this evening. A few updates, First Friday Art Walk, we have really gained some great momentum, despite Mother Nature's scaring us last Friday afternoon, the sun started shining and hundreds of people came out to support over 30 local artists. Sydney, at the Old Schoolhouse, got her clicker out and counted, and she had over 163 visitors just come through the schoolhouse, which is a part of our art walk routine, and there were several artists inside, from Parker Artists Guild, inside the schoolhouse. So, you know, this is exciting to see, we know that we had well over a couple hundred people come through, all up and down our boundaries, our Main Street, and down Pike's Peak to Victorian Peaks buildings. So, we're gaining some traction and excited to wa, continue to watch this event grow. So please, try to come out, because there's some amazing art. So if you don't have anything to do on a Friday night, First Friday is our last one, will be September 7th, and then we resume again in June, next year. Just wanna give an update on Facebook and, and the website, we broke over 1,000 followers, I don't know, that was a big achievement for us on our Facebook page for Downtown Parker. Our goal is to have at least 5,000, I mean, how many people live in this area? I mean, it's pretty achievable to think that 5,000 people would wanna know what's going on in Downtown Parker, so that's our goal, that we hit 1,000, and since we just actually started promoting it a couple months ago, feel pretty good about that. Our website also, we, I don't have the numbers right now, but we have a weekly beat, a weekly signup, that you can go on downtownparker.com and get an update on what's happening in Downtown Parker in an email format as well. It has all the major events that the Chamber's doing, that, the tailgate, live music, any events down at the parks, so it's a great way to keep informed. Our Government Action Committee sent out a member survey, I think I brought this up last month, to gain feedback from our downtown businesses, and to get kind of a feel of just what the business climate is, what some of their issues are, how business is going, what are some of the actions that they, or some items that they would like to see done in Downtown Parker and our boundaries. The number one business struggle, which I'm glad to hear Dennis is, this is his primary focus, is workforce, is staffing. That was the number one struggle that all of our businesses in Downtown Parker claimed, you know, and stated that they struggle with every, every month. Some, some three items, three top items that we, that it was clear that everyone wanted to work on. We had over 40 to 50 participants in the survey, and that's pretty good, because that's most of our members as well. But what they wanted to see are three things. Parking was number one issue, traffic flow, and then expanded connectivity. So with regard to parking, the DBA is really willing to work with, you know, with the town to come up with a strategy to develop, whether it's a parking district that's an extension of our DBA, or whatever that would look like. So we do have somebody assigned in our DBA that will be reaching out to town to start talking about what is it that we could do to help as a, as an organization to better improve the parking in downtown. Traffic flow is another concern, if there's somebody from Public Works, well, there is, somebody from Public Works that will connect with our DBA representative and discuss, you know, what, what are some ideas that we have as businesses, because a lot of the people that are downtown, you know, basically live there all day, every day, and they see what's happening with traffic flow and can provide some insight. So they'll be in touch with the Public Works representative for the town. The last one is expected, expanded connectivity, which is, you know, improving the sidewalks, particularly down Pike's Peak. When we see this art walk where we have a couple hundred people that are, you know, walking up and down Main Street, and then walking down Pike's Peak Drive to Victorian Peaks, if you've done that before, it's not a very welcoming sidewalk, and that, as we grow these types of events, we need to make sure we have at least one side of, of that street, be a little more inviting and more walkable, so at least two people can walk side by side, walking down the sidewalk. And then the lights, and so we're researching, the DBA is just, you know, we're, we're gonna take it upon ourselves to research the cost, get some bids from other companies of what it would mean to get extended lights like we have on Main Street. I can't tell you how many people comment all the time about how much they love those lights at night, and if we can take it down to Victorian in front of the Old Schoolhouse, connect the Old Schoolhouse and in Parker Station, and then even find a way to take more lights down Pike's Peak, it'll really point out where our downtown live action is happening. And perhaps as we continue to grow down to the library as well, maybe there's some other, you know, unique light ideas that we can come up with. But we are, you know, it's very important for all the businesses to see that they are, it's not just that one block that's our downtown, the downtown does extend further, and so the DBA would like to work with, you know, the town in seeing what we can do to get these lights done. We have, we're taking it upon ourselves to do the research on cost and what it would look like as well, so we can present that to the town. Our next meeting is Wednesday morning at the library, we'll be discussing fundraising. That's our primary topic of discussion for the DBA, because we know we need to raise money to do these types of initiatives, get these things done in Downtown Parker. So we'll hopefully come up with some really good plans, whether it's an event, or how we can tie in some of the things we're already doing to fundraising dollars. So that's, that's our primary focus on Wednesday, is fundraising. So do you have any questions for the DBA?
No, I would just like to encourage, though, as you're aware, I mean, we just engaged a fairly extensive and somewhat expensive parking study, so I would definitely recommend whoever gets assigned with the DBA, a lot of that homework is done, and it's available online right now. And in terms of parking, it's, or excuse me, in terms of Public Works, John's in the back, John Fusa, make sure...
No, no.
Tom. Oh, sorry, Tom, that's right. Make sure that they hook up with Tom on that.
Absolutely.
And then Weldy with the lights, I know, I mean, as you're aware, 'cause it's coming off of your building as well, the, the bidding process and expense with those lights was fairly significant, but if Weldy's done any of that homework that you can take already, and have that person get bids on, that would be fantastic.
And thank you. Thank you for that as well, we've already connected, Michelle and I have connected our, our liaisons from the DBA with the people, the right assigned people as well, and we know that Weldy has all that research that she's done.
Perfect, just instead of having to...
So thank you, we, yeah, I appreciate that. But yeah, we'd like to really do some really good things, our town is growing, and we need to grow with it, and make sure that it's, you know, we have a place that everyone feels safe and comfortable, and, and is so inviting. So that's the primary goal for, you know, the next couple of years for our DBA.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Questions, guys? Nope? Alright, thank you very much, Shelley, appreciate it. Alright, so next up, we've got reports item, or excuse me, public comments. So this is for general public comment, if you're here for an item that's on the agenda, and there's copies of the agenda back there, there will be public comment available on those items when those items come up. So this public comment section is for general public comment, not, for items that are not on our agenda. There's a three-minute time limit, if you look above me, you see a little clock, and I got one back over there as well. You'll come up, state your name and address, start your public comment, I'll start the timer. I'm gonna let you know right now, if you get to zero, I'm not being rude, but I'm gonna cut you off and ask for the next, invite the next person up for public comment. No actions taken on these items, again, it's just an opportunity for you to give input to council. So with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:30, 4 PM, and if there's anyone wishing to address council, this is the, the time to do so. You can start, ladies first, yeah, absolutely, come on down.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terry Vossberg, I live at 12224 South Season Court, and thanks for listening tonight. I'm here tonight to ask for the Town Council for help. I think you will agree that Parker residents have the right to public parking, and I wanna show you, I don't know if the overhead's... But I wanna show you what public parking looks like on my street, on a normal day. Can we get the overhead? Thank you. So, this is a street that has eight homes on it, and you've seen the normal day, we have no parking, no public parking issues on our streets. So public parking is great on my street. When schools in session, this is what it looks like. On that day, there were 27 cars parked on our street, and as you've already heard from me before, it's extremely dangerous, the kids are brand-new drivers, they're driving way too fast, and streets that are unusually narrow anyway, they're bringing a lot of drug issues into the neighborhood too, we're seeing a lot of trash, we're seeing the smoking in their cars, and it's definitely impacting our property value. And for the first time too, I'm hearing people in Parker, in my area, my residence, they're talking about fear. They're afraid of the safety issues driving, you know, that's happening in the neighborhood, and the kids are verbally accosting the neighbors, so it's just really getting almost untenable. I've also heard that some folks mentioned before, "Well, you knew you were living close to high school, you know, didn't you know what you were getting into? I do wanna remind the council that the neighborhood was there first, and that property that the high school was on was supposed to be a middle school, so we were never supposed to deal with any of this." We have tried to handle this like adults, and we have gone and talked to the principal, and in the end, after a couple years of this, they finally came back and said, "We're gonna keep growing, and we're, in fact, we're not gonna let the sophomores park in the parking lot anymore, so you're gonna have more of a problem," so good luck with that. Well, I'm not here to ask the council today to solve the high school parking problem, that's gonna have to be on the high school, I don't think we can control that, but I am asking today for your help, to help us, to help your residents, your neighbors, your community members, you know, we have a right to access to our public parking too, and seriously, when we get this kind of congestion in our streets, we, we can't drive down there, we can't even conduct normal business, and it's just, it's, it's getting, it's getting nuts, to put it, you know, for lack of a better word. Please respect our neighborhood when you're thinking about a solution. We saw how Sheperd High School did it, it was just one sign at the entrance of the neighborhood, very tastefully done. I know that we've even got signage in the city park by Legend High School, so that was one, you know, way the city's already addressed it too, that, you know, no high school parking here. So greatly appreciate your help, would love to hear some feedback, this is my third time here, so really love to hear some feedback, when is appropriate, and I can't now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up. Name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Tobor, 11765 Crow Hill Drive. Before I start, before I hit the timer, congratulations on Sister Act, it was phenomenal.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Your, your acting abilities were phenomenal.
Some people say acting, acting up abilities sometimes, but yeah.
I don't know, it got better as it went on, your character grew. So tonight, I'm here to talk as the President of the Council of Art Science and Culture for Parker. My phone started blowing up this afternoon after lunch of the cancellation of the carriage rides. Realizing that the town is in a budget crunch, and I appreciate the, the position you're in, but what I would like to do is, since it's a cultural event, we've also partnered with the Downtown Business Alliance, we've been a sponsor of the First Friday Art Walk this past week. So what I would like you to do is to give me a couple weeks before you completely cancel it, and cancel the appointments that you already have set with the carriage rides, let me see if I can put a team together for, as a cultural event for Parker and continue it. And I appreciate, I'm not looking for sponsorship from the town, I can find that in many, many places, but if you can give me a couple weeks to do this and come up with a plan to submit back to council, I'd appreciate that. Secondly, I'm coming to you as Preston Hills HOA President, and I saw that on the list of your executive session was an ordinance regarding the Pine Bluffs Development Guide. I want to be clear, and I want you to hear it from me, we've been working with Ryan, Jason, Bryce, John, all those, we are not in agreement with the decisions made on Preston Hills. We have hired council to represent us, to advise us, but I want you to hear from me, Preston Hills not in agreement. We can draw the same conclusion that Ryan and your team has done, and we can come up with the north building being 10 foot taller than the breach level that was agreed to. And I only bring this up because the attorney beat us up in May of this year, in May and June, over the 2003 agreement. He advised the Town Council that there's no other decision that you can make, because this 2,000 agreement stood, and now the town refuses, absolutely refuses to hear anything other than their artistic interpretation of this ordinance. We have, you know, the, the original negotiators for it, Brian Cousins, Teresa Contestable, ready to talk, we even have Patrick Mulready that we reached out to down in Cannon City, who completely agrees with us. It was never to allow the eradication of the view on Pine Bluffs, and if you go out there, go to Teresa Contestable's backyard, who is one of the chief negotiators, her view is gone, it's completely eradicated, and to say otherwise, you, you have to get out there and look at it, it makes it plain as day. And she was one of the negotiators, so obviously selfishly, she was trying to protect her house. And Patrick was out there with them, and Keith Neal from Cobell was out there with them, so they should all have the same. The only one that's at odds with this is the current planning department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up. Going once, going twice, oh, there we go.
Hi.
We get name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Patrice Batchelor, I live at 12206 South Season Court. I've also been here before, along with my neighbors, and I'm here again. I've, I, I think Terry mentioned this too, it's not just a parking situation on South Season Court, it's a dangerous situation. So I mentioned my child before, we've had many neighbors with near misses, and not just the children, almost being hit from the high school, but also children in our own houses in our own neighborhood almost being hit. So I'm here on behalf of that, I don't wanna see a bad accident happen, we are trying desperately to go through all the right hoops, and through all the right channels, and to, to make it, you know, appropriate. I've worked in corporate America for 21 years, and I'm used to coming to a meeting with clear actionable steps, next steps, and not a meeting, you know, not, not having a meeting to have another meeting. So we would really like some next steps and actionable items, you know, based on what I have heard from other neighbors, this has been going on for quite some time, there have been cries for help for quite some time, there have been solutions that have been recommended, none have been accepted. One of the ones that we would like to see as a possibility is residential parking, or residential parking permits. Even if it was half the street, I'm feeling that, that would be a better situation, we're not, we're looking for, you know, potential compromises, but the situation that we have right now is just, it's, it's not manageable, and, and I think that if something does happen, it's on all of our hands, we haven't taken any action because of that. So again, we, we would like a clear why behind why no residential parking permits, that hasn't been clear to any of us. I also understand that there are 500 sophomores at Legend High School with no place to park. So, you know, again, we're told it's not a school situation, we believe it is, and if that continues, it, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure that if we started a petition right now, that we would have a lot of people on there. I don't know of anybody that's in Idowide subdivision that hasn't voiced a concern, they're just not here tonight. So again, trying to come to you and say, please, we're asking for help one more time, asking for your help and to take this situation very seriously, because it is not a parking situation, it's a dangerous situation for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mickey Farrell, and I live at 21806 East Idowile Drive in Parker. I'm also the President of the Idowile Association, and I'll set that issue aside for my folks that live in my community, we are still in conversations with both the town and the school, and we have our next meeting next week, so until, I'll have further comment on that at some point, but while we're on, having ongoing conversations, I'll refrain from commenting on negotiations. I do wanna say that, a thank you to the city staff, they have been very welcoming and very helpful, so I wanna make sure that you all are aware of that. This will be our second meetings, and I've had other meetings with you all on other issues, and we'll continue to do that, but your staff has been very great to work with, and it's, it should be noted, and, and you all should be aware of that. I do wanna quickly provide some comment on, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, you have a public hearing on this, it's...
If it's a specific item on a public hearing, say, reserve that comment, so it'll be on the record for that item.
I will stay, I will stay and then reserve my comment.
Perfect, just so it's associated with it, so it's on the public record.
Sure. That, I will then take my seat and talk to you later.
Cool.
Thanks, Mick.
Like I said, I just want it to be associated with it, so we have a record on it. Alright, next up. Okay, going once, oh. I could start doing it like an auctioneer, you know. Next up...
Hi, my name is Warren Katz, I live at 12235 South Season Court in Park, Colorado. I also live in Idowile subdivision, and I'm here with my neighbors voicing our opinion on what's going on with the parking situation. It, it has been getting worse over the last three years, and it's, it's like beating a dead horse. We try to be nice and have a good relationship with the school, but nothing is really happening at this point, and, I mean, we, I just feel that the best solution would be to have permit parking. I mean, all the neighbors on our street would be willing to go for it, and I really do think that, you know, it is a very dangerous situation for the kids, playing... that, you know, it is a very dangerous situation for the kids playing in the street because you have to watch out. I mean, the kids are rude, they leave trash in front of the house. I mean, I mean, what do you do about it? I mean, what do we do as, you know, property owners? It's not fair to us. We were there first, so I'm here to voice my opinion and hopefully you can come to some type of solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up. Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Lisa McCowen. I'm at 22486 East Hidden Trail Drive.
Say your name one more time.
Lisa McCowen. I just wanted to chime in on the Idyllwild parking situation as well. I live in the neighborhood. I live on a different street and I've noticed in the last year that the parking issue has expanded beyond the court where our neighbors, where my neighbors live that spoke about. So, kids, especially sophomores, since they changed the parking at Legend High School, have been speeding down our streets. They pass pocket parks, they park in front of access to our neighborhood trails. I do have issues because I've seen a lot of speeding and we really don't have recourse for that right now. Also have issues with people that live in the community not having adequate parking for themselves or being able to come in and out of the neighborhood in a safe way. So, just wanted to chime in and add that. Thanks for listening.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right, next up. All right, third time's a charm. Going once, going twice. You moved, yeah, Terry twitched. Is this like, really like an auction house? It would be like, "All right, sold $4,000 to the man in the back." All right, we're going to close public comment at 7:47 PM and go ahead and move on to reports, items and comments from mayor and council. Before we go through each one individually, I would just like to welcome Councilman Rivero back to the United States. It's good to have you back, buddy. It's been weird having a big hole over here. I've been doing council meetings, kind of laying sideways, but it's good to have you back. All right, so let's go ahead and start with Mr. Dyak.
All right, thank you, mayor. Couple of items. It is Dr. Cog update. I am part of the Accountable Health Communities Ad Hoc Committee. It's a $4.5 million grant to try and get clinical and community service providers to talk, streamline operations and hopefully save some money in the interim with increasing efficiency. So, we're all trying to get them to talk and it's going rather well. Transportation funding, the board just approved state funding for the Senate Bill 1, the one-time funding to be allocated to Douglas County, 80% of that. So, 80% of that would be an additional $4 million, which brings up a total of $22 million we'll be talking about to how to improve transportation in Douglas County. So, that's a win, win for Douglas County. E470, I get to take a little bit of the credit, but this was chiefly to Councilmember Martin, who's not here. E470 won a national award with the Senate Bill 90 Temporary Plate Legislation. So, we'll get to collect that in October, but again, Councilmember Martin was pretty much the driving force, his chair behind that. So, kudos to Councilmember Martin. A couple of items that I went to, the Honey Festival this weekend, fantastic event. IRE-A Fish Fry, always great to talk to the utility providers in the area and network with those people. Got to see the last concert in the park, Tunisia, which happened Thursday. And attended the Debbie Jackson and Darryl Pridemore Golf Tournament. And again, Councilmember Martin usually wins that. He could not, he could not play, but his team won it anyway. So, kudos to him.
I guess it's, his team usually wins it, not necessarily.
Yeah, yeah.
Just saying.
He is a multi-talented person. He can, he can get, he can get legislation through the senate here locally and he can also win a golf tournament even with not being there. So, kudos to him.
That good. Debbie.
Several things. We, Michelle and I attended the partnership of Douglas County Government, I think it was two weeks ago. There were numerous presentations and a really large turnout was held in Castle Pines. They share their facility, City of Castle Pines with, at the library at the, at the current time. Sheriff Spurlock was there and one of our issues that day was talking about homelessness that's occurring all over the metro area, but what's coming from our two largest municipalities in the state, from the south, the Springs, from the north, Denver, and they're kind of squeak, you know, coming both ways, which impacts us more. And one of the statistics that he relayed to us is that currently 65% of the folks that are in our, in our overnight facilities and our jails is related to mental health issues. So, that's something that the partnership is really trying to focus on. Also, Douglas County Housing Partnership had that meeting, a couple, two new board members. Two loans were closed this last quarter, which is down. And one of the reasons is that there's not properties available currently that meet the threshold because there's not, the properties are above the price point that will fall into the category. We also watched, and I didn't even think about it until I saw us, a month ago, when the elementary school, Josh, you missed this, I believe, came and they presented to us on the necessity that we had here in Parker and in Douglas County also to have more affordable housing. You were here then?
Yeah, I was the liaison.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, he's the liaison.
Well, I'm watching this video and I'm going, "That looks," I said, "Oh, that, that's us." So, they, from all the other jurisdictions, they, they thought that was a great, great scenario that the young kids, and I can't remember, were they from Pioneer?
From Pioneer. They were, they were great at Pioneer.
Pioneer. I also attended Sister Act on Saturday night and I must say that the mayor's acting ability continues to improve with every, every, every new venture and it really was great.
The singing ability, not so much, but the acting.
No, the singing was good, the shades were especially good. Art Walk on Friday night, attended a little bit of that. That, it, the weather was sketchy, so you never did, you didn't know exactly what was going to happen. I also was at the Fish Fry that IRE-A so graciously invited us to. And lots of political, politicos there and scenarios going on kind of at every table. It's always interesting to watch. I attended the Honeybee Festival for a short while on Sunday. I asked a few questions and they said that they felt like this was even a larger turnout than the previous year. And we had a little bit different layout and the weather held out. It wasn't so hot. I think last year was about 95 degrees in total, total sun. Renee and I had a meeting this afternoon, liaison to HR, Human Resource and to Parks and Recs. And one of the things that we've been doing for a number of years, about 10 years, is a kid triathlon. So, the focus is more not on the ability, but participation. So, it is swimming, biking and running. Started out originally, had about 50 kids participating. Now, we have 200. So, that, that, it's a really good, good scenario for kids to participate in. The other quick item is on our, on the Parks and Recs website, the top search items. One is soccer, two is volleyball, three is tennis, four is yoga, five is babysitting. Not that we babysit, because I was quizzical about that. They said, "No, no, people are looking for babysitters while they come to participate in activities there." And six was, was dance. Also, on Thursday night, Councilwoman Holland and I attended the Chamber Night at Douglas County Fair and Rodeo. It was very well attended. You could barely move. So, that was, the weather held out for that night also. And I think, I think that's all.
If you guys could only see her page up here, her piece of paper, there's no rhyme or reason to where they're written or order or fashion.
I had it.
I'm just saying. Renee.
Thank you. So, in addition to some things that were already mentioned, I had also my liaison with the town administrator, my liaison meeting with the town administrator today. And on Sunday, I was able to judge the Dutch Oven at the Douglas County Fair. And I got to say, it started hailing in the middle of it, tents went flying. I hid in the porta potty.
It's all good, baby. Any port in a storm, any port in a storm.
The food was great.
Yes. All right, Mr. Rivero, you want to tell us about kayaking in Sweden?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's good to be home. I am blessed enough that I, as much as I love my town, I do need a break and I can, I can get out of here for a little bit and breathe and it, but it is always, it is always nice to come back.
You really couldn't breathe this year, though.
No, this year, no. It's, as everybody knows, it's, it's hot and humid in Europe right now and I actually contracted a little bit of pneumonia, so excuse me if I cough up here.
Nothing says vacation like some happy.
Nothing says vacation like pneumonia.
Yeah.
I'm not contagious.
Amy.
Okay, I missed Tunisia, Concert in the Park, but we did stop by and see that 80's band. And you all know that just brings out a huge crowd, everyone. What, was having so much fun, but what was so cute is we saw toddlers all the way up to our active adults dancing and singing to the music. And it was just so neat to see the different generations all singing and dancing.
And they knew the words.
They knew the words, so we were just really having fun with that. We also had Art Walk, did get out. Unfortunately, I need to like start on the other end of town, down by the schoolhouse and kind of work my way back, because I always get stuck in this little hub and then I never get to see the whole thing, whether it's Art Walk, Wine Walk, anything like that. So, I think I might try a different strategy on these last few opportunities that we have. Like Debbie mentioned, we went to the Douglas County Fair and Rodeo for Chamber Night. It was the 100th anniversary for the Douglas County Fair, so it was a lot of fun. We got to see a little bit of bull riding that night and some mutton busting as well, so that was pretty cool. We did see Sister Act and I mean, everyone's commented on it, but over the years that Mike has started acting, you're a pro.
Wow, thank you.
You were awesome. So, we had so much fun.
Talk about that paycheck, then.
Yeah, you might need her. And Honey Festival was already mentioned. Let's see, the IRE-A Fish Fry. Again, that's an opportunity for us to really go out and network, not only with the people that represent us as the town of Parker when it comes to, you know, our public utilities, but also working with all of the other municipalities that surround the town of Parker. And it was brought up several times, how fortunate we are to live in Douglas County and be able to work so closely with each other, because when we do go up to CML, the Colorado Municipal League, other events, even when I went out to NLC, National League of Cities, people will come up and say, "How do you all do it in Douglas County? Why do you all work so well together?" Because the other counties around us, they do not have what we have here in Douglas County. You know, maybe it's our little secret, we don't want to share how we work so well. I don't know. But anyway, so that was one of the big compliments that I received that night during that event. I'm jumping around on my notes, too. The Debbie Jackson Golf Tournament, I did that for the private company that I work for, but that's something that has always been an event that is very dear to many people's hearts here in the town of Parker. It's basically a foundation and it is actually Debbie Jackson and Darryl Pridemore now. We've added Darryl's name to it. It's a foundation that provides scholarships for Douglas County High School seniors. So, it's something that's very near and dear to a lot of people's hearts here.
And we did pretty good.
Heck, yeah, for only playing once a year, I did really good. And let's see, I had the Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable meeting as well. And that one, I have all kinds of really cool colorful heat maps of planes landing, departing. And what we work on on that is to really make sure that not only the incoming planes, helicopters are following the noise ordinance for all of the members of our community, all the way up there to the ones that do live close to Centennial. We have noise monitors all throughout these areas that we, you know, track. And we also work very closely with all of the different schools, trying to make sure that the students are following these rules as well and just being aware of what's going on. So, if you ever do have a problem with any of that noise or anything, you can always reach out to me. I'll connect you with the right people. Happy to do that. I think we're pretty fortunate where we are. And, you know, sometimes it's DIA traffic, it could be Buckley traffic or Centennial. So, anytime you have something, you report the time and of the day and what type of plane or helicopter you think it is, they can tell you exactly what's going on with that. So, anyway, I think that was all the fun I had in the last few weeks.
Awesome.
So, that's it.
All right, couple of updates from me.
Can I have a timer?
No, mine's going to be quick. I had my bi-monthly Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting this year, the main presenters, it was a very interesting meeting. The main presenters were Walker Stapleton and Jared Polis. And so, Metro Mayor's Caucus is 41 of us mayors from the metro area. We meet every two months. Also discussed the plethora of ballot initiatives and amendments and such that are going to be in front of all of us as voters this year. And then, one where we had a presentation on was a group that is looking to establish through the initiative process, a fair redistricting committee that is made up of independents, Republicans and Democrats for the redistricting that's going to be coming down everyone's way here pretty soon. So, it was interesting to hear about that. Upcoming events, this Thursday night, I host my monthly Scouts Night with the mayor. So, if you guys know any scouts, the second Thursday of each month at 4:00 PM in this room, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Brownies, Cub Scouts, any of them who need their badge requirements can come down and spend an hour here and learn about their municipal government, kind of knock it all out at once. I do that every month. And then also, it will probably be, it's not officially say, but probably be the last Thursday of this month, I'm hosting an informative, an informative meeting about RTD. I've had citizens over the last couple of months both contact me about how can Parker get out of RTD District and others saying, "How can we get more of Parker into RTD District?" And then people just wondering information in between. So, our elected RTD District Representative will be here to discuss and have information on that. And then, lastly, I want to thank Councilman John Dyak for covering for me a couple of times. Well, got to be up here, got to be mayor pro tem while I was, while I was rehearsing for Sister Act.
On his birthday.
On, on his birthday, too. So, I greatly appreciate, appreciate you covering for me there, buddy.
You bet. It's a, it's a very, I, I listen to Mayor Wade every, every week or every other week and you take what he does for granted and when you're put in a different position, that's similar yet different, it is, it is incredibly surreal that you don't know a whole lot about what he does.
I don't know what, I don't know what the heck I'm doing.
He makes it look so easy, so glad you're back.
Excellent. All right, cool. Well, let's go ahead and move on to item number seven, which is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. So, council, with that, I have Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7H in front of you.
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion from Amy to approve those items and a second from Debbie. Council, please vote. Motion passes, ooh, motion passes unanimously. Next up is item number eight. This is a public hearing. 8A is Riada North filing one, tracks S and T, wellhouse access road, site plan and easement agreement amendments. And let's see, Carolyn, you're going to be our head honcho on this one?
Yes, I am.
All right, rock and roll.
Good evening, council and mayor. This evening, we'll be reviewing a site plan amendment and access easement amendment for Riada North filing one, tracks S and T regarding the wellhouse access road. A land use proposal located on town-owned property requires a public hearing before the Planning Commission and Town Council per the Land Development Ordinance. This proposal is located on town property northwest of the intersection of Hilltop and Canterbury Parkway on tracks S and T as are shown on this slide. The purpose of this request is to address operational and emergency response access to the existing wellhouse. The water district prefers to provide permanent access to the wellhouse via an existing two-track road to avoid potential delivery conflicts and interactions with pedestrians and cyclists along the existing concrete path. This site plan amendment application is related to the Water Resource Centralization Project currently underway by Parker Water and Sanitation District. Groundwater from several wells that currently supply water directly into the district's distribution system will be diverted to three centralized disinfection facilities, including the Riada North Wellhouse. As a result, chemical deliveries and maintenance requirements at the facility are estimated by the applicant to increase by about 15%. The approved access is a 10-foot wide concrete walking trail through Tallman Park on track S, which then crosses into track T as an asphalt driveway to the wellhouse site itself. This access easement was granted by separate document between the town and Parker Water Sand in 2005. The district's primary access, however... The district's primary access, however, has been a dirt two-track road located mostly on track T. As a part of this proposal, Parker Water and Sand is requesting that Town Council approve an ordinance to amend the current access easement. This amendment will establish the two-track road as the permanent access for the wellhouse and remove the current access through Tallman Park. Maintenance for the new access will be the responsibility of the district per the original access agreement. The proposal is located on open space and a neighborhood park. No structure landscaping or parking are a part of the proposal, and the request is consistent with the 2035 master plan as well as the Riada North Plan Development Guide. Staff visited the site to assess impacts to the clubhouse and to the closest residences. The vicinity map in the corner notes where the photos were taken from, and an "as the crow flies" measurement of the distances. I know it's difficult to read, the one to the right is about 770 feet, and the one to the left is about 1,050. Both of the two photos were taken from immediately adjacent to the rear property fences. The larger of the two photos shows the view from the back of the clubhouse facility and is the only ground-level location that offered a view of the proposed access. You can kind of see it back there, uh, where the arrow is pointing to. The smaller photo was taken behind the nearest residence. A substantial stand of trees in the intervening wash screens the access from view of the These two photos were taken from the highest point staff could access. The larger photo was taken from the second-story balcony of the clubhouse, and the smaller was taken from a two-story observation tower to the west of the clubhouse. The "as the crow fly" dimensions on, uh, this map are about 1,200 feet. Referral comments were requested from 13 town departments and outside agencies. No comments were received that required revisions to the proposal.
Just to clarify, you said 13, but it says 15 on here.
15, I apologize.
Just making sure.
There were 15. In conclusion, this application is a part of a large-scale water quality project that will benefit the current and future residents of Parker. Approval of this proposal and the associated easement will provide separate and improved emergency response access to the Riada North wellhouse and allow safer vehicular access for day-to-day maintenance activities. The proposed site plan amendment was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on July 12, 2018. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the site plan amendment, subject to the conditions contained in staff's report, as well as ordinance 1.263.1. That concludes staff presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions on those two items, the site plan amendment and ordinance number 1.263.1?
Um, I, Carolyn, I, I'm just curious as to, um, has the Water District looked at having an entrance off of Old Hilltop and creating a driveway that way, and maybe even improving the road and not just having a two-track?
So, we did look at some alternatives, I will let the applicant speak to that, but, um, to, the topography in that area is quite significant and a pretty big obstacle to that.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, and we have a representative from?
We do, we have representatives from Black and Beach and also from Parker Water Sand.
Perfect, come on down. If you'd like to, if you'd like to, we'd love to hear from you. Um, name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Leela Perkins, and I actually live at 11704 Hale Court, Parker, Colorado, 80138. Um, just in response, Carolyn answered it well, but we did look at the potential for coming off of Hilltop, and there, it's really, really steep, so you can't really access that road from there. And then, in regards to improving the road more so than, um, the improvements that are proposed, the, the laying down of the gravel, um, the intent was to keep that, uh, area as natural and native-looking as possible.
Okay.
While still meeting the requirements of South Metro Fire Rescue.
With the increased 15% traffic, do you believe that there'll be more deterioration of that road, or is it your opinion that it will stay to look exactly as it stays today?
So, it will look different once it's improved in the fact that it will have more of a gravel base and, um, the slopes will be maintained, but, I mean, it.
Okay, you're improving the road, I apologize, I thought we were maintaining the two-track road.
No, they're improving.
No, we're, we're essentially.
There, there, there are improvements that are gonna be required for emergency access. They include a little bit of widening and a gravel, it's a gravel road, but it needs to be able to, um, accommodate emergency vehicles. Also, there'll be a, a covert that'll be replaced because of the weight of the emergency vehicles.
Okay. Okay, well, that answer, I, I apologize, I, I thought I read this thoroughly, I, I guess I did not. My, my question was, obviously with, with the dirt two-track, there is erosion, I had a two-track going through a property I own just near here, and ended up having to lock a gate because it was just washing my hill away.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, council? All right, thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:12 PM if there's anyone here to address council on these two items. All right, this is the one, come on down. Same rules as applied before, you got the three minutes above me here, state your name and address, and we'll roll through it.
Uh, so my name is, uh, Mickey Farrell, uh, again, I'm the Idowild president, I live at 21806 East Idowild Drive, Parker, Colorado, 80138. Um, so I've had some back and forth with city staff on this, and, uh, they're, uh, aware of my comments. Um, we're converting a temporary easement into a permanent facility, and if I'm on the other side of the table, I'm actually probably gonna make the same recommendation to you, but I'm not. I'm a representative of the community that's gonna live with a temporary easement turning into a permanent facility that has an impact on our community. Is it a significant impact? No, in the grand scheme of life, it's not. I think the point I want to make is going back to how this originally got put in the middle of a field in the first place, and it's not your all's fault, and it's not probably the current staff's fault, but as improvements in infrastructure are made, and this is my daily job, I do this every day, I advocate for infrastructure every single day, I de- I deal with NEPA every single day, so I do alternatives analysis after alternatives analysis every day. So we always look for minimizing impacts, probably, I'm only aware of the two, the two alternatives that were presented, uh, at least from the email that I got and that went to Planning Commission, and they marry, very well have been done, um, but we, you know, I saw the two opportunities, it's either converting a temporary access into a permanent road in the middle of an open-space field, which is a much longer indirect route to a facility in the middle of nowhere, that's critical infrastructure for response time, emergency response time, or it's to put them down a concrete path that interferes with pedestrians, there's no good alternative here. I certainly understand, um, why the city staff and why Parker Water wants to, to do this, but I hope in the future, when we're doing infrastructure improvements, we're not gonna stick a critical infrastructure piece in the middle of a field that's dang near impossible to get to. So I think that's the larger point I would like to make. You know, that was done 10 years ago, we can't unring that bell, but when we have infrastructure like this and we have to make changes, there are gonna be impacts to communities, and the trees that were planted down there that hide it from that trail, that was part of a litigation back 10 years ago, and that's why those trees were planted, was to hide that viewscape from why it was there. So, I guess I'm expressing concern, um, I can't really say why we would oppose it other than it's going to impact, anytime you put a permanent facility into a viewscape and op- open land that's set aside for the community, there is a small impact. So it, the opposition isn't strong, but it is more of the point of, I hope as we go in the future and we're putting in critical infrastructure pieces, that we're not gonna put them in the middle of nowhere where we have to deal with issues like this. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mickey, appreciate it. All right, anybody else for public comment?
Mayor, so the record is clear, this is not a temporary easement, this was a permanent easement that was granted in 2005. In fact, it was a blanket easement across the open-space tract, and what this amendment will do would be to create a specific location for the easement, which is the, uh, the two-track road.
Okay, thank you very much. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Curtis, my address is 22104 East Idowild in Parker. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Um, I've really just a couple points to make, uh, one is to staff, uh, when you went and viewed, uh, the area in question, although you located, uh, the homes closest to it and the structure closest to it, uh, my home actually has the best view of it, um, but I'm not here to oppose it. Um, I actually support it, uh, one, to get the access vehicles off of that concrete path that I use with my children, uh, so for me, that's important. Uh, the second point, in, uh, all respect, uh, since I've lived in Idowild since it was a very new, uh, neighborhood, the pump house actually, uh, was approved for construction and build before the neighborhood, uh, just so for that, um, it was actually there prior to the park, the neighborhood, all of that, so, uh, but I, I do support putting the path there to get those emergency vehicles off of that permanent concrete path that's there, but I would ask staff, uh, perhaps in the future, uh, things like that, looking at the angles that might view those areas, uh, as opposed to whatever the closest, uh, structure, closest residents, uh, might bend, there are actually a number of homes that actually have a better view of that area, they'll look over those trees that you pictured, um, that actually have more exposure to that. Um, and for that, we actually also oppose the road that would come off of Hilltop, uh, as it takes, uh, fortunately, it's too steep to put a road on anyhow, um, but it does create quite the eyesore if you're actually looking at an elevated level down, uh, toward that park in that area, so.
That would be a fun road only one direction.
It's only fun down, uh, up, but it's not usually fun. Thank you very much.
I got a G, man, I'll just take that. Thank you very much. All right, next up. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:17 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or two separate motions on items 8A1 and A2.
Um, I move, I move to approve the Riada North filing one, tracks S and T, wellhouse access road site plan amendment based upon staff's fault, staff's findings and the conditions contained.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, and the next item is A2.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.263.1 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by Amy. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, next item up is item 8B. This is Stonegate filing 27, First Amendment, Lot 1A1, used by special review. And Ryan, were you like trying to duck under the table there, like you were gonna? All right, good. Ryan, you're all set, you're gonna lead us in this one tonight.
A little taller than Carolyn, so, all right, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, the applicant, Pinnacle Consulting, is seeking a use-by-special-review approval for a freestanding wireless communication facility for Sprint Wireless. They also seek approval for the freestanding facility to exceed the 60-foot height maximum permitted in the corporate park at Stonegate Plan Development Zoning. Jenny Hamblin from Pinnacle Consulting is present this evening and has a brief presentation following mine, and will also make herself available to answer questions from council. So this parcel is located north of the E470 Chambers Road off-ramp. The location of the monopole facility itself will be just west of the building shown on this slide. The uses surrounding the facility include the E470 right-of-way to the south and west, undeveloped Cottonwood Highlands PD land to the north, and existing light industrial buildings, an IRA substation, and an E470 maintenance facility to the east. So the freestanding wireless communication facility, it consists of a 60-foot 4-inch monopole with a 10-by-10 walled structure at its base. The walled structure will be eight feet in height and will conceal equipment associated with this facility. The materials and colors of the walls will match the existing nearby trash enclosure and buildings, and will be surrounded on three sides by existing and new trees and shrubs. All of the antennas on the monopole will be located within a concealment shroud and/or canister so that no antennas or protrusions will be visible on the monopole. So the Town of Parker Land Development Ordinance requires that all freestanding wireless communication facilities that are located on private par- property be subject to the use by special review. Furthermore, the Land Development Ordinance requires that freestanding wireless communication facilities not exceed the maximum height structure in the, in the underlying zone district in which it is located. The maximum structure height permitted in the corporate park at Stonegate is 60 feet, and the proposed monopole is 60 feet 4 inches. So the LDO does have requirements that must be adhered to for these facilities, and a lot of the criteria overlap with the use-by-special-review criteria. For example, setback requirement of one foot of distance from the property line for each foot of facility height is met. Uh, the facility does not exceed 65 feet, that is met, and the Town of Parker 25, uh, 2035 master plan, uh, requirements are met. Existing vegetation and landscaping around the facility, uh, will screen the facility, and that is met as well. And as detailed in the staff report, uh, staff has completed a review of both requests and has determined that the facility meets the nine use-by-special-review conditions. So on July 12, 2018, Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend that the Town Council approve the use-by-special-review request, and staff is recommending that council approve the use-by-special-review request to, number one, allow the freestanding communication facility, and number two, to allow the facility to exceed the 60-foot height maximum permitted in the zone district. So that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to take any questions from council. Thank you.
Excellent. Council, any questions for Ryan before we have Jenny come up?
I'm gonna wait for Jenny.
No?
No.
All right. Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Name is Jenny Hamblin, uh, address is 3 Inverness Drive East, technically Inglewood, 80112. All right, so, pretty short and sweet, I'm just gonna follow up on a few things that Ryan mentioned. Um, this, what we're requesting is an approval for a 60-foot 4-inch, uh, concealed monop- what we call monopole for Sprint. So why this location? Um, this location was identified by Sprint RF 2-5, a gap in what we call coverage. Uh, we have a supportive landowner, we have no objection from any adjacent property owners, and their location is in a non-residential area. Uh, most importantly, it supports the continued growth of Parker and the increased demand for wireless customers. All right, so why the need for 60 feet? The image on the left is, uh, a coverage map, it's current with Sprint, so, um, on that little box, the left, um, bright yellow square or triangle, I guess you can call it, is the American furniture location. Uh, the one on the top right is that big blue one that is off Parker and Cottonwood. So in between those areas, there was, um, identified a need, uh, for coverage, so, blue is poor coverage, gray is no coverage, as you get closer to the locations, obviously the coverage improves. This is actually, um, Sprint's coverage indoors, so it actually is even greater when you're outside. 60 feet Sprint identified as, um, overcomes the obstructions in the area, so you hit, you have trees, you have the overpasses for E470, um, as well as some of the buildings in the area. Um, the height also increases the network speed for Sprint, as, um, serves customers as well as emergency services. Uh, 60 feet will allow Sprint to offer the strongest coverage and highest voice quality possible. Um, rule of thumb in the industry is, the lower the height, the lower the service. Um, next slide, um, this shows you a before and after, so, left image is the same that I showed you, the right image is what the coverage would be, um, if we were approved to install a 60-foot monopole. It increases the coverage, um, to the south, um, of E470 along Chambers Road, which I know, um, will be developed in the, in the future as Parker grows. Uh, next one. As Ryan showed you, um, photo simulations of the stealth monopole from various, uh, directions, uh, it will, like he said, be, um, a 100-foot, 100-square-feet compound, uh, it will match everything, it's gonna look just like the dumpster right next to it. Um, and the details of impact, uh, the structure will be concealed and painted to match existing structures, it'll improve the wireless service. Uh, um, the wireless compound is only 100 square feet, the location is on private property and does include access, uh, will not impact traffic, pose any traffic hazards, the facility does not emit any sort of pollution, noise, et cetera, and there's no impact to the health or safety of the residents. So concluding points, um, as Ryan mentioned, it meets the nine use-by-special criteria review, the construction, um, will commence within 180 days of approval, and if there's any change in owner or operator, Parker will be notified within 15 days. And, um, in respect to, uh, distance from Centennial Airport, um, if there's any requirements- And in respect to distance from Centennial Airport, if there's any requirements from the FAA, Sprint will be working directly with Centennial Airport. They do have a regulatory specialist that did communicate this proposed structure with Centennial Airport, and they did get a impact study saying no hazards. So, questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I've got just a couple. I noticed in one of your slides that there is a power line very close, and since most macro stations go on power line, most macro station antennas go on existing power line trellises, why is that not an idea here?
That is a very difficult opportunity with Excel. I know multiple projects I'm currently working on, Excel takes years, and it's one of those where they prefer us to explore other options. That would be a bigger agreement, that would be a national level.
The second question, does, with your knowledge, does Sprint have a plan in the future to go to micro-based stations, or are you gonna stay with the macro?
They do both. This one suited best for the location, was just to put one pole at 60 feet and fill the gap in more dense areas like downtown, especially in consideration to your, all the events you have. That's where you could look at doing more small cell stuff.
Okay, and why the 4 inches?
Technically, so, when we started this, it was anything over 35 feet?
35 feet, yeah.
So we're asking for a much bigger approval. But now, technically, the pole, the top of the canister is actually 59 feet, but if you include the lightning rod that we need to put on there, it goes to 60 feet 4 inches.
The lightning rod.
Yes.
That's kinda cool. I wanna see lightning rod regulation, you know, and all that works.
I'll get that to you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks.
Other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:27 PM. If there's anyone wishing to address Counsel on this item. Terry, are you sitting down? Okay. I didn't know if you were grabbing your seat. Come on down. Name an address for the record, please.
Terry Dodd, 11450 Marlborough Drive in Parker, 80138. I'm curious if this is a 5G potential facility, and the distance of it from the Parker Performing Arts School.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:28. And Jenny, I'll have you come back up if you don't mind, just, you know, one question. Go ahead, and you can, or we've got a question from the public?
Yes, to address your 5G, Sprint's not there yet. Their technology would not allow for their equipment to fit inside the pole yet. I've seen the dimensions, and it's got a little bit of ways to go. So this right now is, it'll be the best antennas that they have. We're constantly upgrading their equipment. So when 5G comes, it will be now, then a, let's make it fit. So this right now is not 5G, but future, potentially, yes.
And then distance from Parker Performing Arts School?
I don't know. I could pull up my laptop real quick and get a distance.
Do we have a map, Ryan, that you could just pull up real quick? I don't know if we had. I mean, I'm not good at judging. Oh, no, you're, I didn't know if the presentation had one. It's a, I mean, I don't wanna speak on her behalf. It's a fair distance between that. I've been there at that building, and it's a fairly, fairly good distance from there. You go across all that property that Redbar was looking at, which is a pretty significant jump over there.
Jenny, is Sprint still running CDMA, or are they GSM?
CDMA, sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, with that, Counsel, entertain further discussion or a motion on item 8B, please.
I move to approve, based upon staff findings, with the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is 8C, Parker Square Track C1 Rezone and Vacation of Right-of-Way. We have two items on this. Item number one is ordinance number 3.336 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance rezoning certain property within the Town of Parker, Colorado, known as Parker Square Track C1, from C Commercial District to GD Greater Downtown District within the Market Center Design District pursuant to the Town of Parker Land Development Code and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And then item number two is ordinance number 1.514 on second reading, which is a bill for an ordinance vacating a portion of Sunway located within the plat of Parker Square Track C1. Who's gonna, Ryan, are you gonna be leading us tonight? All right, you got to get you for twice.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a proposal to vacate a portion of Sunway Right-of-Way, as shown in yellow on this slide, as well as to rezone a half-acre parcel, as shown in red, from C Commercial to Greater Downtown District Market Center. This parcel is on the southeast corner of Solar Circle and Sunway. The applicant is Gene Gregory, and he is present this evening, should Counsel have any questions. I'll start off with the right-of-way vacation. Counsel is seeing this because the Land Development Ordinance requires a public hearing for rights of way that have been constructed to be vacated. Sunway is a short, non-residential, local road that starts at Parker Square Drive to the north and terminates in a dead end just south of Solar Circle. When the property to the south developed for the Pine Bluffs Multi-Family Project, Sunway was not needed for access. The town has no plans to extend or improve Sunway, as this portion of Sunway is not important to the public street network or local traffic circulation and safety. The vacated portion of right-of-way will allow for access, circulation, and parking for the development, to the, development of the adjacent property to the east shown in red. Engineering has reviewed this vacation request and is supportive of it. If approved, the applicant would purchase the vacated right-of-way from the town. Excuse me, there are currently three applications that are being processed on the lot to the adjacent east of the proposed vacation. These applications include, of course, the proposed rezoning that you're gonna be hearing this evening, a replat to combine the proposed vacated Sunway right-of-way with Track C1, and a site plan to allow the construction of a 4,718-square-foot restaurant on this property. The replat and site plan are being processed administratively. So as mentioned, this is also a proposal to rezone Track C1, as shown in red, from C Commercial to Greater Downtown District Market Center. The applicant has submitted this rezoning to align more with the Greater Downtown District Market Center zoning to the north of this property, which is shown in brown, to the north. The zoning is similar to C Commercial in its allowed uses, but allows a reduced front-yard setback. The rezoning allows the setbacks to be determined at site plan review. So this map depicts the parcel in relations to the town's designated master plan areas. The subject property abuts the Central Commercial District Master Plan Area, which is shown in red, into the north of this parcel. The Central Commercial Area promotes land uses such as offices, restaurants, and personal services. The requested rezoning is consistent with the goals and strategy of the master plan and will allow adequate opportunities for expansion of the town's economic base. The rezoning will also create a mix of uses in this area that includes residential, restaurant, and offices. So based on this analysis, staff has determined that the request is consistent with our master plan. So both of these applications were legal notice correctly per the Land Development Ordinance, and last month, Planning Commission members voted unanimously to recommend that the Counsel approve both rezoning and right-of-way vacation requests. Staff is recommending that the Counsel approve these requests to rezone the property and vacate the Sunway right-of-way. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? No? And does the applicant have anything else to add, or?
No.
No? You're good? Okay. All right, well, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:34 PM, if there's anyone here to address Counsel on these two items. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:34, and I would entertain further discussion or motion on items C1 and C2.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.514 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, C2.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.336 on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Debbie and a second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is number nine, and this is the item we have under ordinances, is ordinance number 8.29 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to adopt a new Chapter 4.10 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the Shopping Center Assistance Program. Mr. Matt Carlson is gonna lead us on this. You guys got the blue shirt, yellow tie memo today?
Yeah, you know, it's good stuff.
Paul already left. Was he wearing a blue shirt and a yellow? No?
Yeah, I think he was.
He's wearing a white shirt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Counsel, thank you. Tonight, we have before you a proposed new ordinance, the origins of which were requests by developers for assistance with projects that couldn't or shouldn't have utilized the existing TAP ordinance that we have and we've used so many times before for specific end users. The requests were coming because the retail market is changing. It's a rapidly evolving market. Traditionally anchored, retail-anchored centers are giving way to smaller mixed-use facilities that sometimes are anchored. Sometimes they're not anchored. Many times when they are anchored, it's anchored by non-retail users. So developers have come to us with requests for assistance in lieu of that, in lieu of increasing costs for both entitlement and land, labor, materials, as well as, the site challenges are certainly changing as well. If you will, the easy lots in Parker have been developed, and as we want to encourage our developers to build these kinds of facilities, the challenge becomes, sometimes they're not predominantly retail users. So we are looking for a way to sort of meet both goals, find a way to increase our sales taxes, find a way to assist the developer, and find a way to get the kinds of developments that we'd like to see that bring not only additional retail, but additional services for our citizens as well. So based on these requests, and following your direction back in February at the Town Council's retreat, finance, the legal department, myself, worked with the Town Administrator's Office to craft the ordinance that you have before you tonight. And if approved, this ordinance would become Section 4.10 of the Town Parker, Town of Parker's Municipal Code. The ordinance allows for developers to request assistance for projects that meet the following qualification thresholds. It consists of two or more commercial buildings. They're greater than 30,000 square feet in size. 50% of that, of the leasable space in that project, is sales tax generating. And finally, they aggregate a minimum of 50 full-time equivalent positions. All of these things are in keeping with the kinds of trends that we're seeing for new commercial centers, be it retail or this mix of use that we're starting to see as really sort of the evolving shopping center of the future, if you wanna call it that. In much the same way, assuming they meet these qualifications in much the same way that we currently do for TAP agreements, economic development and finance would review those applications, and the operating parameters of the proposed project, and then make a recommendation to Counsel, such that the ordinance would be enacted, or if the ordinance was enacted, then it would allow us to contemplate assistance that would be executed at your discretion and Town Council's discretion. We would advise, as we do for TAP agreements now, in terms of the size of that, of that assistance, based on the developer's request. But that assistance would be limited to a maximum 10-year agreement, and a maximum use of shareback, shared sales taxes of 50%. It's a change from what we have with TAP, which is not limited in terms of the size of that agreement, although it matches the same 10-year agreement that we already have. And it's important to note as well that should developer choose to participate in the Shopping Center Assistance Program, that it would prohibit the end users ultimately participating in the TAP agreements. So essentially, we're going into these agreements without knowing the end users. That's the piece that made us create this in the first place. But as those users evolve or emerge, we simply wouldn't be able to be able to satisfy both. The public improvements that the developer contemplates would be built by the developer and would be assisted with the agreement, and that would prohibit us then from doing so for the end users. That concludes my presentation of the ordinance and its particulars. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, great. Questions? John, Jeff?
Yeah, Matt, thanks for the presentation. Can you just talk a little bit about the basis of the parameters? How did you get to 50%? Did you go out to other areas around us and kind of identify what they do? Are we the only ones doing this? Speak a little bit about that, please.
So we did. We reached out to communities across the Front Range, not just within the greater metro area, but across the Front Range, and asked for examples, if you would. Interestingly enough, there are a number of communities who have a TAP agreement, just as we do. Some of those, some of those communities have interpreted that TAP agreement to respond to the kinds of assistance that we are proposing using a separate ordinance to do. Following legal counsel's advice, we felt like this was a better route to establish a much clearer kind of threshold level, as well as the way that the assistance would work. There are some communities who have separate funds to assist these kinds of programs, but they, some of them are not sales tax-generated. They're assisted by an alternative source of funds. But we did not find another ordinance that looked exactly like this one, so we were sort of starting out with fresh cloth.
Thank you.
In terms of the parameters, we looked at what the community, or what the market is developing today around retail. You know, traditionally, these facilities looked like in excess of 60,000 square foot. Think King Supers up at the north end of town, a large development anchored by a retail, a large retail user, in that case, 125,000 square feet, surrounded by support retail, additional 25,000 to 30,000 square feet. That's the more traditional kind of model. And in corresponding with our friends in the commercial real estate industry, we said, what are we seeing? Where are these going? We see things like freestanding EDs being the anchors for these kinds of things. We see things like medical office buildings being the anchors for these new kinds of centers. Essentially, they look more like a community center that retail is a part of and a support, and they tend to activate that retail so it doesn't stand alone as it has in the past.
So this, this is a refresh of an existing program, a quite common program that we see in a lot of municipalities, but due to the changing conditions.
Correct.
This is, this is new.
That is exactly right. It really is a response to the developers saying, we're seeing things change. Here's the kinds of projects that you're gonna see coming forward from us. In fact, the impetus for this discussion was one of those types of projects. Originally, we sat down with legal counsel, and Mr. Maloney said, we can't do that with what we've got in our ordinance today. We've gotta rethink this a little bit.
Debbie, did you have your hand up? I know Renee did, so I was, all right, then Renee, then Josh.
Matt, can you speak a little bit to condition number six and seven, and why those limitations are in there?
Help me with six and seven.
Limited to the initial development of a new shopping center is six, and no participation in the existing TAP program if the developer elects to use the Shopping Center Assistance Program.
Super. So the initial development of the new shopping center, the alternative to that would be allowing participation for redevelopment. And currently, we have in place, through our Urban Renewal Authority and the urban renewal areas that have been established, what we felt, at least at this point in time, was probably adequate, an adequate way to address the needs of any sort of a redevelopment project that may need assistance. So we felt more comfortable limiting this, instead of opening up a plethora of tools that could be used for redevelopment. Because we had those tools in place, we felt more comfortable limiting it to the initial development only. Something that we certainly could revise if the projects came along that were, for some reason, unbeknownst to us today, were challenging us with that, then we'd have to look at revising that ordinance. In terms of participation in one or the other, this anticipates a shareback of as much as, but not more than, 50% of sales taxes generated from the, from the users, not knowing who those users are when we enter into the agreement. So we've limited ourselves, if you will, so that the town comes out whole in this process, if you will. It does prohibit us from taking then the remaining 50% and sharing that, which would leave the town without a source of revenue, which was an unacceptable idea.
Thank you.
Josh?
My question goes, I think, to Matt, and then also maybe Mr. Fusta can chime in. As we review and change our design standards and change our outlook for these retail As we review and, and change our design standards and change our outlook for these retail spaces, getting away from the big box and the existing strip malls and going to these more mixed-use things, does this tie in well with that, and was that brought into the discussion?
It was. So, remember, we still have the TAP agreement, or the TAP Assistance Program in place. So, if King Supers were to come in tomorrow, or another large box user, or those types of projects that, that we have incented in the past were to come in, we have a project, we have an ability to address the needs that might assist, that we might need for assistance there. These are really geared more at these kind of community and neighborhood centers that, quite frankly, are anticipated as part of our, our master plan, and which we see, we are addressing all the time as, as we get projects that are proposed who start to meet these kinds of standards.
So, I agree with Matt, Councilman. What I would simply say is the proposed ordinance has language that the kinds of projects that are eligible for the incentive, one of the purposes is to fund and support certain public and quasi-public improvements. So, as the market begins to deliver these mixed commercial developments, they could be more akin to town-center-like developments, retail, service, office, entertainment. Those typically have amenities that are public in nature, even if they're privately owned. So, this ordinance, like the existing TAP ordinance, contemplates that one of the purposes is to fund and support certain public and quasi-public improvements, to your point.
I think that, I mean, everybody knows my, my push is for the neighborhood center because I think it lessens traffic. You lessen that cross-town traffic, and I think that this ordinance will incentivize some of those neighborhood centers, and is, is that a true statement, or is that a fair statement, I should say?
I think that, I think that's exactly the kinds of, of projects that we, we are hoping to incentivize with this kind of a program. It, it's more than, if you will, sort of the typical strip retail?
Yep.
That wants to settle on those corners. It, it won't prevent those, those projects, but it would prevent us from incenting them. We're hoping that we can draw in developers who have a bigger picture in mind that creates that kind of town center, that, that neighborhood center that tends to actuate by the houses that are surrounding it.
Excellent. And then, since the word's coming up, incentive, incentivize, can you walk me through the process and what, what, how, how does it put the town out? There's a lot of misinformation out there. So, so walk me through how indebted the people are in the town of Parker, and what does it do to the citizens, and what does it cost us, and, and talk about the, the benefit of this process.
Well, and, and just to re-clarify that, because we have no fewer than four or five town council candidates sitting in the audience, and I'm sure four or five on the video camera out there, and we've all seen ranges of incentives from the town has a pile of cash and rights checks like a sailor on shore leave to other things. What, what, explain in basic, simple terms what a shareback is.
So, the, the incentive that's contemplated in, in both this program, as well as that which we currently utilize in our tax and fee assistance program, is a shareback of sales taxes that are generated from that project and only that project that are, that are remitted to the town. So, there is no upfront, there is no pile of cash, there is, there is, there is, in fact, no incentive whatsoever until the improvements that, that Mr. Fusa mentioned, either public or quasi-public in their nature, that can range from jobs to infrastructure to parks and piases and trails, and any of those are, are built, the developer incurs the cost of those, the town enters into this agreement to shareback a portion of those costs, and only a portion. In the past nine years of the TAP agreement, 16 TAP agreements have been, have been entered into between the developers, the end users, in, in many cases, and the town, none of those have ever contemplated 100% shareback. It's only ever a portion of what the town is getting, so the town is always getting, getting its bite of the apple, if you will, and for a limited period of time. Those 16 agreements that we're talking about typically were less than five years, so if you figure the average, the average length of, of, of economic viability, if you will, for a commercial project, somewhere between 25 and 30 years is reasonable to expect. That means the town's gonna recognize sales tax from that project for an additional 25, 20 to 25 years after the agreement's expired. This contemplates much the same arrangement, but this does limit the share to 50% or less. So, of every dollar that comes into the town, if we've entered into this kind of agreement, we can never shareback more than 50 cents. Those are dollars that are collected, they're shared back in subsequent quarters. There are thresholds that those, that those organizations have to meet. If they don't meet those, we don't, we don't shareback those dollars.
Okay. Other questions? Amy?
I would just like to clarify, and when you first started with your presentation about this?
Mm-hmm.
And we talk about this all the time, so we know exactly what, you know, you're going through that list, reeling through things, and maybe it's the way I heard it, but you talked about one of the benefits of the incentive was to increase sales tax, and I wanna clarify that.
We're not increasing taxes.
Generating, we're increasing the generation and/or collection of sales tax through these businesses and employers.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We're not increasing the rate.
I just heard it one way, and as for all of our listeners and our audience members wanted to clarify that.
A tabor attorney out, attorney out there just went, "What?" Point well taken.
Generation and/or collection of, okay.
Yeah, we're not increasing the rate of sales tax, we're increasing the volume of, as a result of increased sales.
Absolutely, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Debbie, question?
And, and it's, it's one or the other. It's either they meet a monetary threshold and then we're finished, or a year.
Correct.
So, it, it's one or the other, whichever's met first.
And actually, the contractual agreements that generate this connection spell that out, that it is a, a specific amount or a specific period of time, whichever comes first.
And if we have TAP, is this now gonna be SCAP?
SCAP. I have resisted putting a.
No, no more acronyms.
A moniker to this.
Yeah. To the four or five candidates in the room, learn acronyms like nobody's business because they, everything.
We'll come up with something clever. How about that?
SCAP is good.
One other point we should make clear is that our sales tax is set at 3%. We only shareback 2.5% because we have a half-cent set aside that's dedicated for parks and recreation, so when we talk about sharing 50%, it's only 50% of 2.5%.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarification.
That's a good point.
Okay? All right. Since everyone on council's asked your questions, we'll open it up for public comment. And Mr. Fusa, unless you have anything else to add, you know, open it up for public comment at 8:53 PM.
Come on, guys.
All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:53, and I will entertain further discussion or motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 8.29 on second reading.
Second.
Motion from Debbie and a second from Renee. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business for this council meeting, we will recess at 8:54 PM and then reconvene the exec session backstage.